This time I'll call to order the August 21, 2025 meeting of the Clearwater City Council. This time I'd like to move to item two on the agenda, and if you would all join me in standing for the invocation tonight to be given by Major Ted Morris from the Salvation Army, and then afterwards remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us. We thank you for a country in which we live where business can be done in a way such as is done in this city. Father, we thank you for our mayor, the city council members, the city manager's office, fire and rescue and law enforcement, those who go toward the danger rather than away from it. We ask that you bless this meeting tonight. May the decisions and discussions that ensue be in line with your will for our city, and in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Major Morris. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish to address the council tonight, please complete a comment card. Comment cards are located by the clerks seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce our dais tonight. To my far left is our deputy city clerk Nicole Sprague.
Hello.
To her right is our city attorney David Marvones.
Hello, good evening.
To his right is city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
His right and my left is council member Mike Menino.
Good evening.
To my right, council member David Albridge.
Good evening.
To his right, vice mayor Lena Tixheda.
Good evening.
To her right, city manager Jennifer Poirier.
Good evening.
To her right, assistant city manager Dan Slaughter, and to his right, assistant city manager Al Battlem.
Good evening.
This time we'll move to item 4.1 on the oath, excuse me, on the agenda, and I'd like to call forward our brand-new fire chief, who's celebrating his second week on the job, and so happy to have him here in Clearwater to administer the oath of office along with our deputy clerk Nicole Sprague.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. Clearwater Fire Rescue is proud to welcome nine new firefighters to our ranks. They started June 2nd, and over the past 10 weeks, they've completed our intensive advanced recruit school, which included both fire and EMS training. On August 8th, they officially graduated and have now joined their station assignments, continuing to grow and refine their skills as they take the challenges, make those challenges of the first year. And we are excited to share with them this moment tonight and congratulate them. Also, they haven't been busy enough. Within the next few months, they're all going to be starting paramedic school, so just add that on. So, we appreciate it very much. And now for the introductions. Wyatt Henry? Just raise your hand. Firefighter Henry comes to us from Sunstar Ambulance, stepping into his first firefighting role. He's currently assigned to B shift and ready to bring his EMS experience to the next chapter of the service. Next, Dexter Humphries. Firefighter Humphries is a proud U.S. Navy veteran, and fire service runs in his family. His younger brother works for Clearwater Fire Rescue at Station 45 on A ship. Dexter has been assigned to B ship. Next, Chance Kelly. Firefighter Kelly also brings valuable EMS experience from his time at Sunstar Ambulance. This is his first firefighting position, and now he's going to be part of A ship. I think I'm maybe blocking. Ramon Lagon. Firefighter Lagon joins us with experience from Orange County Fire Rescue, and he's already hit the ground running on his assigned shift, A ship. Caroline Osborne. Firefighter Osborne brings her skills and experience from St. Pete Beach Fire Rescue, and she's now proudly serving on the A ship. Rami Surai. Firefighter Surai has a strong EMS background. He's having worked in both Sunstar and Pasco County Fire Rescue. He's now bringing that experience to our C shift. Logan Short. Firefighter Short is new to the fire service but brings valuable experience from Sunstar Ambulance, and a fun fact, his cousin works for Clearwater Fire Rescue at Station 47. Logan is assigned to B shift. Kellogg Smith. Firefighter Smith also comes from Sunstar Ambulance, and while this is his first firefighting role, his EMS background is a strong foundation, and he's now part of our C shift team. Charles Stokes. Firefighter Stokes is starting his firefighter career with us after previously working on youth ministries, and he's bringing his heart for service to the A ship. And I'd like to, once again, just welcome the nine new members for Clearwater Fire Rescue.
Hello. If you'd go ahead and reach your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of Government.
The Constitution of Government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Florida.
And the State of Florida.
And the Charter and Laws.
The Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
Of the City of Clearwater.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Form the duties.
Form the duties.
Of a firefighter.
Of a firefighter.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Watch your step there.
Good to have you.
Good to see you.
Welcome aboard.
See you.
Congratulations.
Great job anticipating there. You can hang up or anything.
Watch your step there.
Congratulations.
Not allowed to fall.
Congratulations.
You've got a great job.
Congratulations.
It was nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What a great way to start our meeting. We had a chance, a couple of us had a chance to attend the graduation ceremony and just seen the camaraderie of these new firefighters and the way they work together to get through class, and couldn't be more excited to have them joining our team. With that, we'll move to item 5.1 on the agenda, approval of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We'll now move to our consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from tonight's consent?
Yes, items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4 have been requested.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda except for items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4?
I move to approve the consent agenda 6.2 and 6.5 through 6.10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time we'll move to item 6.1 on the agenda.
Approve agreement for professional external audit services for fiscal years, for five fiscal years ending September 30 through 2025 through 2029 with the accounting auditing firm of Cherry Beckett LLP.
Good evening, council. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. As discussed at Monday's work session, this is a five-year agreement for external auditing services. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is anyone here from the public that desires to speak to the agenda item 6.1?
I'm Mr. Haluba. I actually think that hiring an outside auditor on an ongoing basis is a pretty good idea. I think it's a good thing. I do wish it had been going on back when, you know, accounting irregularities were discovered at Parks and Recreation under Kevin Dunbar. Slaughter in an evil and unethical move. I don't know, maybe Mr. Slaughter's afraid of something, like the truth. But it will be interesting to see what sort of evil and unethical behavior is unearthed by an outside auditor.
Is there anyone else here from the public tonight that desires to speak to the agenda item 6.1? Hearing saying none, is there any council discussion? There's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 6.3.
Approve acceptance of University of North Florida Training and Services Institute High Visibility Education and Support Program for Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Grant Award.
Good afternoon. Good evening, mayor, council, deputy chief, Mike Woll, Colorado Police Department. As mentioned in Monday's work session, this is a high-visibility enforcement grant through IPTM University of North Florida for pedestrian bicycle enforcement at overtime rate. We are awarded the grant. We're seeking approval for $22,969.15.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to the agenda item 6.3?
I'm Mr. Haluba, and I, you know, really don't know what to think about this. This operation that's donating this $23,000 is of, you know, charity, something Mr. Menino knows about, and I don't believe he should be allowed to vote on this, given his history with his charity. $23,000 is not going to go very far. It's kind of a piss-anti-grant, and accepting it has created a 16-page document. I just wonder how many of you have even read this document? I'd ask for a show of hands, but none of you would move because I don't think any of you have read it. So, high-visibility education. Are we going to put Jared Stiff in the middle of Gulf Bay Boulevard waving a banner that says "Be careful"? Seems every time Clearwater receives a grant, it gets screwed up. Reclaimed Water is one example. The Clearwater Ferry is another one, a big one. Citizens need trustworthy policing. We need enforcement that upholds law in an ethical manner, not with an evil purpose We need policing that supports and upholds individual rights, especially those individual rights granted by the First Amendment. While I'm glad to see that, you know, Mr. Wallach has come out of hiding and made the trip down from Pasco County at our expense, once again, I'm going to say it, I believe Clearwater Police should be shut down.
Is there anyone else here from the public that desires to speak to the agenda item 6.3? Okay, if not, is there any council discussion? To start, I would like to say something. I didn't say it at the work session the other day, but this is a serious issue, not just for Clearwater, but for the entire county. We have far too many pedestrian bicycle accidents with vehicles, far too many, and many of them are, quite frankly, the fault of the pedestrian or the bicyclist. We had a young man killed last school year, ran red light on an e-bike and was hit. But we statistically, as a county, have led the country in the ratio of incidents to those for the folks compared to the number of folks who live here. So, I did read the entire contract, and I'm sure others up here did. We're not going to raise our hand every time we're asked for a question of the public about it, but this issue that we're addressing here with this is incredibly important to our community. We want to make it a safer community in all respects, and so I welcome this study. I welcome the grant. I just wanted to say that. And if anybody else wants to share or any further discussion, if not, is there a motion?
Motion of... Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say Fort Penellas. We are also, we're trying to get to zero deaths and any traffic incidents in the next 15 years, and we got a long way to go. This is a step toward that, and it's a good thing.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.3.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 6.4.
Approve an agreement with Penellas County Sheriff's Office for forensic crime scene processing, latent prints, property and evidence storage, and Penellas Juvenile Assessment Center Security Services.
Good evening, mayor, council. As I spoke at Monday's work session, this is for a new yearly agreement between the Colorado Police Department and the Penellas County Sheriff's Office. It's a 1.4% decrease from last year with a total cost of $520,996, and that is to cover the cost of forensic crime scene processing, latent fingerprint examination, property evidence storage, and security costs related to the Penellas County Juvenile Assessment Center.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 6.4?
I think this is an absolute bargain. It covers, you know, many, many things that Mr. Wallach just stated, like property and evidence storage, juvenile assessment center, crime scene processing, things that obviously Clearwater Police are not equipped to do on their own, which is understandable since they're a secondary law enforcement organization. But it makes it obvious that Clearwater Police cannot properly process a crime scene without PSCO assistance. So what does Clearwater Police do? That's a question a lot of people ask. The only answer that I can give definitively is their primary objective is just to justify their own existence in the shadow of PCSO. I'll again say, you know, we don't need Clearwater Police at all. PCSO is primary. This documentation proves that. Just turn everything over to them, not just the things that Clearwater Police fails at. If we shut down Clearwater Police, then maybe the fiefdom of Slaughter, Gandy, and Wallach will topple. Now, proper crime scene processing may have been helpful back on September 29, 2018.
Is there anyone else here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 6.4? If not, is there any council discussion? There's no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now move to agenda item 7.1.
Appoint 10 members to the 2025 Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and adopt Resolution 25-dash... Now, the agenda item says 12, 25-12, but that's a scribbler's error. It's actually 25-11, so just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Dylan Maye, acting housing manager. On Monday, I presented Resolution 25-11, which would appoint this year as Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. One change has been made to the resolution since Monday. The Community Development Board has recommended Michelle Schenault in lieu of Michael Bootzakis. Both the agenda narrative and resolution have been updated. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 7.1? Hearing saying none, is there any council discussion? There's none? Oh, excuse me. City Attorney?
Thank you, mayor. We have Resolution 25-11, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, appointing the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee in accordance with Florida Statute Section 420.9076 and required for purposes of the State Housing Initiative's partnership, SHIP program, providing that the city's neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board, the NAHAB, among several other individuals, shall serve as said committee, appointing existing NAHAB members to the committee, appointing additional members to the committee in accordance with Section 2.228 Code of Ordinances of the City of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Now, is there a motion?
I move to approve agenda item 7.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Move to agenda item 7.2.
Approve the State Housing Initiative's Partnership Program, annual report, and local housing incentive certification.
Dylan Maye, acting housing manager. On Monday, I presented the SHIP annual report. Just some quick notes from that presentation. The city did bring in a total of $1.8 million approximately in revenues from our annual allocation and program income. We nearly expended that total amount. We assisted 25 families through the following strategies and with the following funding: $579,525 for purchase assistance, $302,549 for owner-occupied rehabilitation, and $830,442 for the construction of four new single-family homes. Our $1.85 million in SHIP expenditure leveraged approximately $1.97 million in outside funds. Staff is requesting approval to submit the attached annual SHIP report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 7.2? Hearing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 7.2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 7.3 will be continued to September 18, 2025. We'll move to agenda item 7.4.
Update council rules and adopt the real Resolution 25-12.
Mayor, as you know, we discussed this on Monday. Happy to answer any questions. If you'd like, I could go ahead and read the resolution now, just to get that out of the way, because I know there may be some council discussion. We have Resolution 25-12, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending council rules, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 7.4? If not, is there any council discussion? Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I've had a few days to ponder this, and after some time, to reflect and review the actual meeting on Monday, and having numerous communications with citizens, I feel compelled to share my concerns about this agenda item as it currently stands. One of our core responsibilities we have is to ensure transparency, fairness, and accessibility for the public we serve, yet approving this agenda item as is may be perceived as moving away from that commitment. We went from requiring two weeks to add on an agenda item to virtually no time at all. We have already... We have already recently removed public comments on items not on the agenda, and now we are considering further limiting public comment by only alerting the public within three days in advance. I do not believe this is doing the right thing for the citizens. Their ability to be informed and to participate meaningfully is essential to good governance. Further limiting that access undermines the trust they place on us. I am very mindful that too much inflexibility can create challenges. But we have recently added a comment section for all our council during the work session, and we still maintain the three minutes on work meeting. So there is that flexibility should anything arise at the last minute. But this may be perceived as less about efficiency and more like an ambush. We've all been on the receiving end of feeling blindsided, and we know it does not create a healthy and collaborative environment. Our residents deserve better, I believe. They deserve a government that welcomes their voice input, not one that continues to reduce their opportunity to engage. Now, that being said, I am willing to follow Councilmember Manino's suggestion as a compromise by setting the notification limit to five minutes. This adjustment still maintains a level of flexibility while still ensuring the public and council has a fair opportunity to engage and participate. Furthermore, regarding Mayor Rector's comment about adding a short narrative with intended shared documentation, documents attached to the agenda, I also agree to that. It is beneficial. These attachments should also be shared with the city manager to ensure clarity, context, and consistency in communication. Providing additional information helps the public understand agenda items and fully facilitates more meaningful engagement. So for that reason, I cannot support this agenda item as is currently written without these adjustments in place. So I'm going to see if this sticks, and I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda item to include language requiring no less than five days' notice prior to meetings to add an agenda item, which must include a brief narrative with all intended shared documents attached and shared with city management.
Is there a second to her motion tonight?
I would like a further discussion. I do second that motion, but I would like to add something to it.
There's a motion and a second on the amendment, yes.
Yeah, with an amendment. I do support you in that. I do see both sides of the discussion. I do think you meant five days.
What did I say?
Five days.
Sorry. Five days.
That sounded real good to me.
Yeah, five minutes. That would be really flexible.
Your point is understood. Monday, we obviously all listened and had relevant, very important discussions on both sides of this, and why we want to make sure we have the flexibility and the fluidity to provide efficient government, to remove red tape and allow us to govern for our residents. There is that balance with ensuring public trust. And any decisions we make in the decision-making process that opens that door of questioning motives or transparency that threatens that trust, I think it's worth a deeper discussion. In your, why I said amend that motion is solely because right now, we do not have any policy in place that states when an agenda has to be posted. I know staff does a good job and works hard to try to get that posted for the public sometimes by Wednesday. Sometimes, if I'm not mistaken, that may come on a Thursday. Sometimes it may come sooner. But there's no, I think, with respect to making sure that staff has time and the agenda's posted, as well as we have that ability to add, maybe we do put some procedure in place where let's standardize staff posting in a work session agenda by, you know, Thursday afternoon or something. We then marry that with this new policy of Thursday afternoon as the last chance before the agenda's posted to make something added to a work session, so that we're not crossing over and making, putting out an agenda, coming back on a Thursday because it's within the time limit, now we still have to repost an agenda. Maybe the two timeframes should be married. But with that, I do, I do, I am supportive of that, because we do, we are approving a resolution that puts an opportunity for us to make open comments in discussion form to a work session. I think that's a safeguard, if we hear something Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, Sunday, to bring to the table and at least bring it forward. If it is late to the table, and we do say it, we all have the ability, and we have in the past, to say, this just hit us, I think we should probably step back and talk a little bit more about this, and it gets moved to the next agenda item. And we also have a Thursday to add new business. So I am supportive, that's why I second the motion, but I would add, I would add the contingency that we marry the posting of a work session agenda to a Thursday afternoon with that same deadline, so that we're not having to repost, if that makes sense.
Just so we remember, though, we don't always have a work session before council meeting. So for instance, our next council meeting, we do not have a work session before it, so...
In the motion, it was...
But it's a five-day...
In the motion, I didn't specify work session.
I would be careful not to tie it specifically to work sessions. We don't always have one.
I agree.
The amendment...
It's the five-day time, timeframe, I think is the important part for it to be married with.
So I'll point out again, like, I don't know that we necessarily have an issue with this, and I'll leave it to what the city attorney, kind of, the conversation I had with him at the work session is, I was under the impression that that's us just wanting to bring something forward. What we've heard in the community to be, to be brought, we put it on an agenda item, we talk about the work session, and we decide, are we going to vote on this on Thursday? Or will we, do we need more time as a group? I would be extremely taken back, honestly, if I brought something up within those two-week timeframes, or whatever it is, put it on a work session, presented it on Monday, and everybody was immediately on board. I mean, call me crazy, but I would really be apprehensive to that. So I don't think that there's necessarily a problem with it. I mean, I can think about, and now knowing that it can be a one-way communication, when I put something on there, you know, the two items that come to mind is the Attorney General's letter, right? I could have put more information within that of just Attorney General letter, and then I spoke with the Chief of Staff, have more information, right, to let everybody know kind of where we're coming at with it. So I understand that. At the time, I didn't think I could do that, because I thought that would be breaking the sunshine. The second thing that I did was fluoride, and as I, we talked about on Monday, you know, I had been talking with the city manager about that for a few weeks prior. And then I did not expect to put it on that agenda item to get it passed on Thursday. And we had that discussion, the back and forth. Everybody needed some more time, we needed to get through this. We obviously want the public to be right along board and see what their sentiment is, and how long do we need? What is that? And we had that discussion, and we pushed it four weeks out. So I just am a little confused, because I don't, I haven't seen, since I've been sitting in the seat, an issue with it. And I didn't realize this was a cause for concern. I understand the city attorney wanting to put it into a rule form, but I don't think, I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So what are we doing here? It's just kind of a little mind-boggling to me.
So let me clarify that then. So let me, let me speak on my behalf. I do not find that acceptable. When I'm being told, after going through proper channels, to postpone my request that I requested but through human error was omitted, to wait another two weeks, but then I look at an agenda item, and it was added on a Friday for a Monday, that is, that opportunity was not given to me. And so that's point number one. And number two, I guess what the focus is being lost here, it's proper, it's to alert and educate our citizens. Asking our citizens to log in every Friday to make sure we don't add something on Monday, for example, not always, is, I don't think that's acceptable. You know, people have lives, they're busy, and so what I'm saying is, not just for our comfort level, the citizens need ample time to participate, and three days is not enough. And we have other mechanisms and processes to bring things forward under a more urgent matter, but for agenda items, to go from two weeks strict, and then with, I guess, some exceptions towards you, and then to nothing, no, no, no boundaries, I'm uncomfortable with that. And my conversations with, with, because while the, during the work session, I got actually texts from citizens saying, please continue, we need a heads-up. People have lives, they go away for the weekend, they have children, they have careers, and they would like to have more than three days' notice to engage and participate in these discussions. And it's, it is clear to me that three days is not enough. So when you keep saying, I don't see a problem, I wanted to clarify, at least it was for me and for the communications that I had with, with those who reached out to me, three days is not enough.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
So I don't know what you went through. I mean, when I followed channels to put something on an agenda, I went through the city manager and the city clerk, so I apologize for whatever happened with you in your instance. I mean, I just followed what was before me as a council member, just as it's afforded to you as a vice mayor. So I can't speak specifically to that. To the other thing, I'm not saying that it's not giving them three days, is what I'm saying, is that it is important, and I would be shocked if one of us put something on an agenda, you presented it on a Monday, and Thursday, we're all like, yep, that's it. I think that Monday is you presenting what it is that needs to be set. It's, it's not...
That the citizens are not being given enough head, you know, enough alertness to understand that. So it's not just about us reacting, it's about the citizens having ample time to engage.
Like they can't engage on a work session.
They can listen.
Maybe I'm not articulating myself correctly, is what I'm saying, is you bring it up, we, it's, you propose, whoever it is proposes their thing on a Monday, then we discuss it, and we're like, okay, yeah, we're not ready for this Thursday. We need a month, we need sixty days, we need ninety days, we need 120 days. This is a lot to take in, we definitely need to hear from our citizens. In my mind's eye, that's how it should go. But the, but the process of putting it on the agenda is just saying, hey, essentially, this is new business I want to bring before the five of us up here. It's not, again, I would be hard-pressed to think, especially myself, would be okay with something being interjected on a Thursday, Friday, being presented on a Monday, and us being like, yep, that makes sense. No, I agree with you wholeheartedly. That's not enough time for me to take it in and do proper amount of research. I can probably tell you that everybody on this board knows that I love data, and looking at things and making sure that the public sentiment is there. I wouldn't even be comfortable with that. So I agree with you on that, and is what, and maybe that's why I'm saying, maybe there's a miss in how I'm conveying what I'm saying. I would see it as, that Monday, whoever it is presents their, their topic, and then we decide the timeframe of when we want to readdress it. So I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
And to your point, that is what happened. I mean, we, we did discuss in the work session, we decided we, each of us needed more time to look at it, and invite public to comment, so to your point, that is how we addressed it, so...
Yeah, and I, I agree with Councilman Cotton and what you just said, Mayor. You know, I've never seen a real issue, I mean, I guess you're having some problems with it, that's why you're bringing it up, but all the time that I've been here, I've never seen that. And we've never brought something up, and then the next meeting after a work session, vote on something that the public needs to be privy to. I don't want to feel like I have to wait a certain, if I've got something that happens over the weekend, and I want to mention it at a work session, I think I want to have the freedom to do that. And it, you know, I'm not going to ask for a vote on it, but a good discussion is good for anybody that's tuning in. If they miss it, they can, they can find it, it's recorded, they could find it in the middle of the night if they go back and look at it. And if it's something they really feel that they need to come in and talk about, they will come in and talk about it, you know, when we go to resolve it at some point. I'm fine, I don't, I don't think we've really had anything that's come to us, you know, I'll give your example with fluoride. I mean, that happened real quick, and, you know, that was an issue that had, both sides were very, and I knew we were going to get a lot of public comment on that, and we pushed it out far enough where we could get, you know, a person on one side and a person on the other, and then lots of public discussion before we even went to a vote. And I think that's what would happen. I don't think anybody's going to blindside the public by a quick decision on a Monday and a vote on a Thursday night that has something that the public really is, needs to hear about. So I don't kind of agree. I think we're talking about, I'd leave it as flexible as you can, because whenever you start putting things, you know, you've got a lot of unintended consequences when you start really boiling down on, this has got to happen before this, and this, and this, and then we lose our freedom to bring issues up. And a lot of issues we bring up might not have anything to do with the public. Might be an issue that, you know, we see for safety, or, you know, how we see different staff situations, or like with me, building department stuff that the public really doesn't see, and would really not have a input on, but it's good to get it out and to talk freely about it with you guys, because the only time we can talk is when we're here. And I don't want to see that taken away from us with a real strict, you know, oh, we got so many days before, we got to write it down in a week ahead of time before we can even mention anything about it. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Councilman Manino? Yeah, I, I, the only thing I said, just like I said Monday, we, we, all five of us come prepared for work sessions. I mean, we, we read whatever's in there, we come, and, and sometimes when one of us just puts something on, and it's just a four words, I, I don't feel like I can prepare to discuss it if I don't know more about what we're discussing ahead of time. So I think that is, for me, just, just a courtesy we're going to give one another to, to, to put some context in whatever we're given before the work session, so we have some general idea of how to prepare and kind of how to, for a good discussion amongst us, if, if we're going to be expected to address it and then potentially put it on the, the council meeting agenda. So I, I said on Monday, and, and I'm still happy with the current language that's proposed, and, but, Councilman Manino, you want to share some more?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we can count, we'll do the math again. But I, I think what, this isn't about us, this discussion. It's not, it's not, it's not about us, and us putting something on an agenda, and us doing the homework, and us feeling comfortable with it. It's about the public, and one of the biggest challenges for governments across our country and throughout the world is ensuring public trust, and not just ensuring it, but building it. And with that public trust comes the very things that we're asking for, participation and engagement and feedback, and, and belief in, in what we're doing as, as a city. And anytime we start putting policies in place that have the ability to erode in that trust, in that process of building it, I think we should pump the brakes a little bit and dive deeper, and this is, this is one of them. I, I find discomfort in having staff post an agenda and circling back in forty-eight or seventy-two hours before a meeting and making changes to it or adding things to it. And it's not about me not having time to do the homework, because it's my job to make that time, but it, it's about the public. And the optics from the public side is, what are they doing now? Well, this seems a little shady. What's the transparency with this? And we're, we need to do things and govern, not feeding that scrutiny and feeding that behavior, but to enhance that public trust. And I think this is an opportunity for us to make sure we're, we're ensuring transparency. I don't think there's an issue with saying by Thursday afternoon, that gives us five days, lock it in. I recognize and respect flexibility and fluidity. All those are important, and I think that mechanism is built in, in a work session. We now have the opportunity to speak, which we, last week, we did not, this week, we do. You have an opportunity to bring those up and have that, that discussion. And we also, that Thursday, have an opportunity under new business. But, but I, I don't think this is about us. I think it's bigger, it's about public trust. And once, once an agenda is posted, I think, we, there is no state statute that mandates we post the agenda, just so we know. The only reason we post agendas is for the public. Am I correct in that?
That is generally correct. I mean, there are certain instances where we have to advertise certain meetings, such as budget, milage, but as far as the agenda, generally speaking, there is no requirement to have agenda, generally.
So I, I, I respect staff for wanting to do it seven days in the earlier, you know, the better in their mind to get it off and move forward, but I don't like going back and, and making changes and additions. I think a compromise, like the vice mayor said, was finding that five days, and if something's so important over a weekend, you have an opportunity at a work session or in that Thursday to bring it up and have the discussion, but I'm going to stay where we're at.
Okay, Councilman Cotton?
Yes, thank you, sir. I, I think that we're all saying that we're agreeing, the public trust is paramount, right? I mean, that we all want that. So, I mean, again, I don't see an issue here, I haven't... see an issue here. I haven't seen a specific issue, even when it comes to, seems like it was my agenda items that caused the ruckus here, but even with those, we've fixed it, right? Because we're able to talk on the dais between each other, we see that one was too vague because nothing was there, it was a little cryptic, right? But now, knowing that I can not violate sunshine law by putting more descriptive narrative in why we're bringing something to it, fixed. When it comes to my fluoride issue, again, I wasn't expecting, would it have been great to get a vote on Thursday? Yeah, but never did I expect it, because I'm presenting new information to you guys, that, yeah, you were able to get, the public was able to get, on a Friday or on a Thursday, but nowhere in my mind is like, yep, this is coming Monday, Thursday, we're sending it home. That would be naive and a little bit reckless, if I'm being honest. So, I think each of us have conveyed how important it is to be transparent and to know that we're working for the people and not ourselves. I don't see anything wrong with what's before us here. I still think that we're hitting that nail with the hammer. We're presenting what's important to us when we were able to efficiently get it onto a ballot, or not a ballot, I'm sorry, but onto the agenda, and then have that sunshine law conversation. I think that's the key to what it is that gives us that flexibility and fluidity. Not that we're just looking to get the vote down, right? No, it's more so like, hey, we've got this, this is what we've heard, I'm getting a lot of emails about this, I agree, whatever that is. Here's the information I've done on it, let's have the conversation and set a time to get more information and have a vote on it. So, I think that each of us are saying it's extremely important, that the public is on board with what's going forward. It's just not handcuffing us to making sure we got said thing on an agenda within a said amount of time, or now we do have to wait additional timeframe to get there. So, again, I will say, I don't see it as being broken. I think that we all agree, the public of being allowed to do their homework and still petition us is paramount. That's why we sit here. We are doing their work. So, again, I stand by the original agenda item, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anything further on the motion to amend? If not, the vote on motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that would be three against, and councilmember Menino and vice mayor four. So, now we're back to discussion of the main, of the agenda item that's presented to us tonight, the resolution as presented. Is there any further discussion on that?
Make a motion to approve agenda item seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that would be councilmember Cotton, councilmember Albritton, and the mayor in favor, and councilmember Menino and the vice mayor against. Okay, we'll move to item 7.5.
Approve the vacation of the Westerly five-foot utility easement as platted, requested by landowners Sandra and Joseph Capper, located at 1086 Eldorado Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Brigg. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Robert Casmer, Public Works' Real Estate Coordinator, and brief again from Monday, the item before you is a request from the landowner of 1086 Eldorado Ave. to vacate a rear crossing-platted five-foot utility easement that now hinders the property's development. There are no current or planned utilities within this easement. All proper notices have been published. City staff has reviewed and approved this request. Any questions, please?
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 7.5? If not, could we have a reading on this?
We have ordinance number 9821-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a platted utility easement, portion therein Lot 10, Block 70, along with a portion of the south one-half of Lot 11, Block 70, Mandelay A subdivision, according to the platte thereof, recorded in Plat book 14, pages 32, as recorded in the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion on this? Now, is there a motion?
Motion to-
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Are we back into the same things?
Yep.
Okay. Move to approve agenda item 7.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Agenda item 7.6.
Approve the annexation of 2201 Main Street and pass ordinance 9834-25 on first reading.
Right. All right. Good evening, Lauren Matske, Planning and Development. This request is a voluntary annexation for .70 acres of land that's currently vacant. It's a unique situation in that the property was formerly within the city of Dunedin, and Dunedin recently contracted their city boundaries to enable the city of Clearwater to annex this property. So, as seen on the aerial, the parcel is adjacent to property within the city of Clearwater city limits and the city's planning and service boundaries. To the east in the city, or the parcel to the east, rather, oops, sorry, in the city, these are some of the pictures that were in your agenda package. There's construction going on on the city's parcel for standalone emergency room, and the subject parcel is proposed to serve as surface parking for this new development. So, because this parcel's not located within the city's planning boundary, which is established in the comprehensive plan and is part of an interlocal service boundary agreement, we can't use that process for the annexation. So, that's also part of why there's two companion agenda items coming, following this. Staff's reviewed the petition for annexation, and we're recommending approval. The proposed annexation is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the community development code. There is adequate capacity to serve this property, and the parcels contiguous to existing city boundaries as required by state statutes.
Okay. Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 7.6?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant and property owner. I would normally not take your time and rip victory from the jaws of defeat, as my partner always says, but I could not let this opportunity go by without saying thank you to your staff. Mrs. Poyer, Mr. Slaughter, Ms. Matske, and the engineering team, Ms. Kivitt, they have actually made this project an option for HCA. It never would have happened. The creativity that they showed from the very beginning, we started this process in 2022. Candidly, we had a very frustrating time with our neighbors up the road. Mayor Freeny finally said at their hearing, this is just good government for Dunedin to let go of this parcel and let it go to the city of Clearwater. And without your leaderships continuing to cooperate with the developer, and continuing to reach out to their colleagues and counterparts in Dunedin, this project never would have happened. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to really say thank you to the team, so, appreciate it.
It's great to hear. Thank you for sharing that, yeah. Okay, anyone else from the public desire to speak to this agenda? If not, could we have a reading?
Mayor, we have ordinance number 9834-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion? Now, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 7.6.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 7.7.
Approve a future land use map amendment from undesignated Pinellas County to the institutional category for 2201 Main Street and pass ordinance 9835-25 on first reading.
All right. Good evening again. For the record, Lauren Matske, Planning and Development. So, this is the second of the three cases for the parcel at 2201 Main Street, Dunedin. The series of annexations, or applications, rather, is unique because the parcel was previously in the city of Dunedin, trying to get certain things on the record, so thank you. Under the city of Dunedin's regulations, the property was designated with retail and services for its future land use category, so that would be most consistent with the city of Clearwater's commercial general. Since it had to go through this process, we've collaborated with the applicant, and they're proposing that it instead be designated with institutional. This is consistent, of course, with the parcels to the east that are within the city of Clearwater. You can see that the institutional wraps just to the south of the subject property, institutional uses are in general compatible with the residential area to the south, and in the surrounding jurisdictions, there is primarily commercial and retail uses. So, it's a very compatible category for this, and would provide for a unified designation across both sites, which will become a unified parcel. So, staff determined that the proposed institutional future land use category is consistent with our comprehensive plan and our community development code. There's no adverse impact anticipated with this change in map designation, and staff is recommending approval. The community development board, in its capacity as the local planning agency, reviewed this application at its July 15th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. If city council approves this item, or upon adoption, the staff would prepare an application requesting for a change be made to the countywide land use plan map to maintain consistency across jurisdictions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 7.7? We're seeing none, can we have a reading?
We have ordinance number 9835-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to change the land use for certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, from undesignated Pinellas County to institutional I, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion on this agenda? Now, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 7.7.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Who says agenda item 8.1?
Approving, approve a zoning atlas amendment from undesignated Pinellas County to institutional district for 2201 Main Street and pass ordinance 9836-25 on first reading.
All right. Not significantly different, but I'll use the word unique one more time. It was actually a very interesting process. I've never done or been part of a contraction of city boundaries before, I don't think it happens very often. So, with city council's approval to modify the future land use designation, of course, the zoning atlas must also be modified to maintain consistency from land use to zoning. So, in Dunedin, this parcel was zone general business, which allows large-scale retail, sales facilities, and relatively intense commercial uses. The proposed institutional zoning district is consistent with the parcels to the east, it's compatible with the residential in the area. I went into, in the last case, a little bit about the surrounding uses, but as you can see on this map, there's, it's primarily commercial in the area with the residential to the south. So, staff has determined that this is also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and community development code. The uses that are available to the site, although it would be, is proposed to be surface parking, it's well on its way to becoming surface parking. If in the future that should change, any uses would still remain compatible with the surrounding properties. There's not anticipated to be any adverse impact to the surrounding properties by approving this change. And so, of course, as is surface parking, there is not really anticipated to be any issues with us being able to provide services to it, but this will allow them to have their solid waste in this area and some of the utilities that run through and out. The community development board also reviewed this at their July 15th meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
We need to give the applicant a chance to present at this point?
If they would like to do so.
Would the applicant like to present? No? Well, thank you. Anything further, Ms. Matske, from the staff?
Yes.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item 8.1? You're seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, then we have a reading.
We have ordinance number 9836-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by rezoning certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, from undesignated Pinellas County to institutional I, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Is there any further council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Eight, one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Move to agenda item nine, city manager reports.
Sir, I just would like to ask our deputy city clerk to give a quick update just about our upcoming meeting dates. We have a holiday, and because of it being budget time, it's not a normal cycle, and so just want to remind the public of what we have coming up. Nicole?
Yes, just a big reminder for everybody involved that there's a budget meeting on the third at 6:00 for council, at 5:15 for DDB, and the fourth, we have a regular council meeting. There is no work session ahead of those meetings, but just if there's any reference to budgets that you would like to see, the meeting from the 16th is out there for review.
And just for the public, that'll be their opportunity to see us discuss it, since there's no work session. Great. Thank you. Okay, item 10, city attorney.
Nothing right now.
Okay. Item 11, closing comments by councilmembers. Councilmember Cotton?
I have no comments, thank you, sir.
Councilman Menino?
Nothing.
Councilmember Albritton?
Well, I do have something I want to say. Tomorrow, 2:00 PM, is something I've been waiting for over a decade, and that's groundbaking on the Clearwater multimodal transit center that's over on Court and Myrtle. And finally, we're going to get the start of our transit center that we've been talking about since 2014. So, it's a great start. Everybody's invited to come out. I know they're going to have some speakers out there, and a lot of people that were helpful in making this happen will be there to talk as well. But that's tomorrow at 2:00. That's it.
Okay, vice mayor?
None at this time.
Okay. Well, I think it's appropriate that I bring this up now, because the discussion we just had on council rules, but the only thing I really had to share was, you all may recall, we did a proclamation for the Red Star Foundation, who's headquartered here. It's an organization that was started by Jerry Schaefer, who's a veteran to recognize nationally, families who are, who either had a service member, a veteran, or a first responder, take their own life by suicide. So, similar to the Purple Heart and the Gold Star families, it's an organization that supports those families that have lost a loved one in that way. And they have now initiated a process where, similar to, we have cities that are Purple Heart cities, they are starting an endeavor to allow cities to apply to be Red Star cities, and invited Clearwater to be the first Red Star city designated in the country. So, they've prepared an application process for all cities, and part of that is a resolution, which I hope to present at the next meeting. We don't have a work session before the next meeting, so I just wanted to give you all a heads up that I would like to put it on for the next council meeting, on September 3rd. I can put it on for the next work session on September 15th, but I really do want to move us to the front of this, so if there's no objection, then I'll disseminate the draft of the resolution, the application, so you all can see that ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
But did want to get that on our next meeting, if we could.
Just make sure it's within five minutes, that's all.
I'll make sure you get it five minutes before the meeting.
Flexible.
And, you know, I, Ms. Cole came in and just made really kind comments about our staff, and I can tell you, we really appreciate that, as a council. Not just the three of you mentioned, just our entire staff. You know, we, we all, you know, have those days where, even me, when I look in the mirror, boy, I wish I could have done it a little differently or better. But those moments when our staff does that are far outweighed by the number of times we knock it out of the park, and we look for creative solutions to serve citizens better. And it just made me feel great to hear that, because I know that's reflective of a lot of our efforts, that really go out of the way to make Clearwater just an exceptional place to live. So, thank you for that. So, thank you for that, your efforts. And Ms. Matsky, step down the room, but appreciate a planning department going the extra yard there. Now, if we can just, I'm jokingly, but if we just figure out a way to just completely take over the entire city of Dunedin. Joking. Well, I mean, we've got to start there on 580, right? I'm just kidding. We love, love our friends in Dunedin, so we're good partners, good rivals when it comes to Major League Baseball, so. But thank you again for all, all the staff members, all your work. And so, with that, I don't have anything further, and we will now adjourn the city council meeting for August 21, 2025.